Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call our adjourn to open session. We just came out of closed and then we'll move on with our agenda. This is the regular city council meeting for Los Alamos for Monday, November 18th. And city attorney, can you bring us out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council has reconvened from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Thank you. Okay, on to the agenda. Item three, we'll do roll call again. And then I think at this point, we'll ask Sunburst Youth Academy, could you join us up here? Just assemble behind us.
Oh, really?
And then Les.
We'll do a quick introduction to staff after this.
Sure.
So.
Honorable mayor, council members.
After we do this, yeah, sorry, not right now. Yeah. Roll call, please.
Roll call for city council. Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy, absent. Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Sunburst Youth Academy Student Council, Class 24. Cadet Cortez.
Here.
Cadet Roney.
Here.
Cadet Yip.
Here.
Cadet Morales.
Here.
Cadet Panito.
Here.
Cadet Hernandez.
Here.
Cadet Cherry.
Here.
Cadet Martinez.
Here.
Cadet Barrera.
Here.
Cadet Cervantes.
Here.
Cadet Mendez.
Here.
And Cadet Marquez.
Thank you. And then for the city council, we have our staff here. City Clerk Wendy Quintenar, city attorney Michael Dowd, and then interim city manager Les Johnson. If you can introduce your staff that's here, please. It's now sitting on a different part of the room. I'd like to look.
Yes. Absolutely. Honorable mayor, council members, it's my pleasure to introduce a number of staff members here to support the meeting tonight. We have our police chief Eric Nunez. We also have our finance director Eric Hendrickson, our recreation manager Ron Noda, and recreation manager Emlyn Noda. We also have our city engineer Dave Hunt, engineer project manager Chris Kelly, associate planner Tom Oliver, and fire chief Ron Roberts.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we'll have the pledge as followed by the invocation. And the academy, the council will be giving that. I guess it will be President Hunter Cortez will lead us in the pledge, and then staff member will give the invocation. Chief DeFeo, I guess?
Yes.
For the invocation. Would you remain standing, please? Please lead us into the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation. Chief DeFeo? Please.
Good evening. I ask that we join each other in prayer, especially during this month of Thanksgiving, that we hold close to our hearts those that we love who have also passed on, and we praise thanks to God for our leadership here this evening, who continue, just like David, to provide justice and protection for this city. I ask this in the name of God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Chief, did you want to say a few words about Sunburst Youth Academy, please?
Absolutely. So we are an academy located joint forces training base whereby our cadets are behind in credits, and so they come to us so that we can catch them up on credits for five and a half months. They give up and sacrifice their outside life to obtain 60 credits to catch them up so that they can now go into the community and/or go back to school and continue their education. And so we have very fine cadets here who are outstanding leaders, and we're very thankful to have them here with us and to show us how well we work with one another.
Thank you very much. Thank you, cadets. Okay. If the council can join me in the front, we have a few presentations. So the first one we have on the agenda is not here. Unfortunately, Dr. Sherman is taking ill, so we hope to catch her soon at the next meeting. So up next will be the Small Business Saturday, and it's certainly a great privilege and honor to recognize a local business here, Alamos I Care. Dr. Avani and John Osborne, if you would, join us up here, please, for Small Business Saturday, the proclamation.
And as far as small, I mean, you see these, there are signs all over the place. They are small business, but they're really huge with a big heart in the community. And they participate in the annual holiday shopping tradition, which communities work together to support small businesses on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So after you do your Black Friday shopping, remember Small Business Saturday and spend local. And this is the 10th anniversary of Small Business Saturday, and we're sure it's gonna be a great success in our community. And we believe that small businesses are a cornerstone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together. And I really say that because here in Los Alamos, you can just go find about anything you want in this city. So with that, we have Small Business Saturday proclamation.
And I don't know, Doctor, you want to say anything about it?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the recognition and honor. We love Los Alamos. We've been here for 20 years, and I look forward to another 20 more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, next up, this is a little, I'm gonna hand the microphone over to Shelley Hasselbrink because it's in recognition of a committee I served on.
Okay, we're doing impromptu here without my reading glasses. Okay, in 2018, the city began the work necessary to update the subdivision and zoning codes in the zoning map with the primary objective being to ensure consistency with the Los Alamos general plan. In the process of updating the zoning codes, city staff and the consulting team worked closely with the zoning advisory committee to identify which general plan policies needed modification to better reflect land use policy intent. We'd like to thank our volunteer committee members. This was a lot of work. If you've seen our general plan, it's more reading than you'd ever want to subject yourself to, but it absolutely guides how our city looks, where businesses are, and why they are where they are. And we'd just like to thank our volunteers that spent many, many months bringing us up to date on this. So, what do we have here? We have our mayor Warren Kusamoto.
Randy, come up here.
And councilmember Mark Chirco. Wow, now I know I'm doing this. And our traffic chair commissioner Randy Hill and volunteer extraordinaire.
Randy.
And there's a number of other ones that are not here tonight, but like I say, this is a lot of behind-the-scenes work that you get to see the results of, but the hours and hours and hours of work that goes behind this and understanding codes and enforcement and everything else, this really is a spectacular accomplishment, and thank you very much.
Okay, and this next one is really special, and you know, it's the 100th anniversary of someone who's special to us. I'm gonna turn this over to my colleague here who would like to introduce this one.
Thank you. I'm okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Los Alamos American Legion Post 716. They had a ceremony on Memorial or Labor Veterans Day where they rededicated their facility. It was originally built in the 60s, the early 60s, and so they had a big ceremony. Actually, it was a huge turnout. Prior to that, we did a time capsule over there, which was very interesting, but the American Legion does a great deal within the community that a lot of us don't see and are aware of. There's a family, if you will, of legionnaires that include the main post, but there's also the Sons of the Legion, American Legion, and I'm honored to be a member of that group, which means our relatives were fighting in the world wars before. There's also a Women's Auxiliary, there's a Junior Auxiliary, and there's a Writers' Auxiliary. Did I catch all of them? I think so. Okay. So if you guys want to come on up, we'd like to present to you a certificate on behalf of the city. Come on up. Certificate on behalf of the city. And there's also a certificate here from the State Assembly, Tyler Deep. And I'll let you guys introduce yourselves from the standpoint. Woody is the current post commander, and I think everybody here is part of the same group. I'll give that one to you. But why don't you introduce yourselves, if you would, Woody, and let us know.
Well, I'm Woody, the commander of the post. It's a great job, and I have a great team over here. Ernie's my first vice. Fred over here is my second vice. And Gunny here is a Marine, he's on the E-board.
Executive officer.
The executive officer on the E-board.
And also writers' president.
Yeah, and also the writers' president. All butts are great guys to work with, and I enjoy working with everybody. And being in Los Alamos for about 10 years now, I love it, too. It's great. Deborah? Deborah, this is Gunny's wife. She's the maid, lady here. Takes care of all the business.
Well, thank you, gentlemen and lady. Thank you for your service. Please, let's get a photo there.
Oh, please.
For those of you who don't know, the Legion is comprised of veterans that are still serving veterans. So it's a mutual helpfulness organization, and it's open to anyone who signed a blank check to the United States government to include their life. They're eligible to join our American Legion. Once they join, once a veteran joins, and like Commander Woody said, the sons, the daughters, the wives can then get in their own little units, the ladies auxiliary, the sons, and they all do their own special thing for the veterans. So we're veterans helping veterans, and we are in love with Los Alamos.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, did I mention something to you about the Sunburst Youth Academy? And I don't know if they're still standing around there in the back or not, but these youngsters, 16 to 18 years old, are considered at risk, meaning that they've dropped out of high school or in danger of dropping out of high school. They actually apply. They're not ordered by anybody to attend, maybe their parents, but they're given an opportunity in a five-and-a-half-month residential program to turn their lives around. It's run by the California National Guard. It's sponsored by the Guard and the federal government, and it gives them an opportunity to essentially re-engage their lives and find better courses for them coming on. They also, as they mentioned, do get 65 high school credits. In many cases, they're able to graduate. In some cases, they get a GED. Other cases, they move back to their high school and finish up their high school diplomas there. They will be graduating in the early part of December over at Cottonwood Church. That particular ceremony is open to the public. If you've never attended one, please do. This is our 24th class. We do two classes a year. The students get an opportunity, once they've finished, to re-enterate, get re-involved in the community that they live in, and they're all over Southern California. The nice part is, is that it's not just the five-and-a-half months. They're assigned a mentor for the remaining 12, or for the next 12 months. So it's actually an 18-month program. The graduation rate is about 95%, and it's one of the most successful programs. There are two other youth challenge programs here in California, but it's one of the most successful programs that the National Guard does. So congratulations to the cadets that were here and anyone in the audience or listening. If you have a child that's between 16 and 18 years old that you think can gain some knowledge and advancement out of this, please go to the Sunburst website, get information, and have them come in for an interview, and you'll be amazed at how they come out because it's night and day difference on the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Gross. Before we move on to oral communications, I guess there's a question for the announcement by the chief.
I just want to announce to the audience that's out there, if you have parked your vehicle in the parking lot on the other side of the building here, it is not owned by the city and it's private property. And if it's posted out there to not park, they're telling us that they're gonna call for tows, to tow the cars that are parked at the sewer district in the Chamber Commerce parking lot. So if your car is parked out there, you may want to leave the building and move that car, because they'll go ahead and act on their own to do that. It's a private party impound. The police department doesn't have anything to do with that. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thanks, chief. Okay, on to item six, which would be oral communication. So at this time, any individual in the audience may come forward and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker, and I do have a blue card for a Debbie Prophet. Debbie, please, come forth.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Debbie Prophet. I am secretary for the American Legion Writers, Chapter 716, in Los Alamos at Post 716. We are located right across the street from the community center, and I wanted to let you all know that we are putting on our ninth annual Toys for Tots breakfast on December 1st from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a $10 donation. Toys are not required, but if you bring them, we gladly accept them. The money raised is 100% of it goes to Toys for Tots, and we also adopt two military families that we take care of. The chapter absorbs 100% of the cost to put on the breakfast, so we can say 100% of what we bring in goes to Toys for Tots and the families. We wanted to invite you, mayor, and the council, to come on over and enjoy a wonderful breakfast of pancakes, eggs, bacon, sausage, all kinds of good stuff. It's the best breakfast in town on Sunday, December 1st. We'd also like to let our first responders in the community know that if they are working on the morning of December 1st, they can come over and breakfast will be on the chapter. Just come on over if they're able to get over there. You know, we'll provide breakfast for them. If you have kids or grandkids, please bring them, because Santa and Mrs. Claus come in about 10 o'clock, and they're there for about an hour and a half. Come in, take pictures, and come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. So, does anybody else and members of the public wish to speak on any other matter that's within our subject jurisdiction? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close oral communications, and we'll move on to council announcements. Anybody wish to go first?
Sure.
Thank you, Mark.
So I, in the last month, there was a lot going on. I attended the, a fourth community meeting on fiscal sustainability. We had five of these. I was lucky enough to attend four, and every time I attended one of these meetings, thanks to the staff's great job at these meetings, in particular fiscal sustainability manager David Kane, I learned a lot, and I also learned a lot from the residents, what the residents are passionate about, some of the things that they're against as the city tries to address its projected financial issues. But I'm confident we will address those. And in line with that, we have a, do we have a workshop scheduled to take place here at the city council chambers? Is it January sometime?
Yes, we're finalizing those dates. It's looking, we're looking towards the January 14th. Once the meeting has been finalized, we will post it on the website and on our social media.
Okay. Thank you. I attended coffee with a cop. I ended up being there way longer than I was supposed to be, just hanging out with the, with the police officers. It was a great event. Great to see the police officers interacting with the community. Starbucks, I think, donated some coffee, which was really nice as well. And it was really neat to talk to one of the officers who came up to me and came up to councilmember Murphy, and I think interim city manager as well, and just told us that they were new to the city, a new police officer in the city. They came from a local, another local city, bigger city, and they said that they could not believe the love that they've been shown in our city, people just waving to them as they drive through our neighborhoods, and just a really positive reception. And they said where they used to be, they used to get the single finger salute instead. So that's a lot better. It was nice to hear that here. We participated in the city manager interviews. We've considered a lot of very qualified candidates, and hopefully we'll be through the process soon. We had a special meeting on November 9th regarding that same issue. Budget meeting to discuss the school resource officer and ensuring a fair division of costs as it relates to that valuable resource that we've got here in our city. Trunk or Treat, I was lucky to attend Trunk or Treat. I invited some friends from out of town, and they were really impressed with the event. So thank you to Recreation and Community Services Department. I don't want to brag, but I will brag that I won the gold in the pie-eating contest that day. I really did. And my wife told me that my big mouth was finally good for something, so. I attended the Best of Los Alamos celebration put on by the Event News Enterprise at Wahoo's. That was a really nice event, recognizing a lot of our local businesses. And so it's really nice to have a local newspaper like Event News Enterprise and also the OC Breeze, I see Shelley back there, providing local, really local news to our community. I also attended the volunteer pre-ification dinner on November 6th with other council members, commissioners, and city staff. That was a nice event to say thank you to the members of the city's volunteer program. And I had a relative of mine participate in the Los Alamos Escape Room, and they were very impressed by the escape room. They went with a group of friends of theirs, and everybody was really impressed. They couldn't believe that a small city like us put on a escape room. And now I have to check out this escape room because I've heard so many positive things about it. So I would suggest that the city council do the escape room together to try to bond, put us in a room.
Can we compete against each other?
We can compete. Now we're all a team in that situation, so. And I'm looking forward to attending Winter Wonderland on December 7th, December 7th, at the, near the St. Isidore Plaza. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
Thank you very much. I conducted the Regional Military Affairs Committee meeting over at Joint Forces Training Base on October the 22nd. Also participated in the quarterly federal executive board meeting at the Joint Forces Training Base on Continuity in Operations. I was also at the last, or the fifth, community meeting on sustainability that was October the 24th at St. Isidore Plaza. I was honored to be able to attend the State of the District breakfast for the Orange County Sanitation District, which is an agency that the city has representation on. I was able to attend the CASA Youth Center Commander's Ball on October the 26th in Huntington Beach. I was also honored to be at the Best of Los Alamos thing where councilmember Chirco was recognized. On November the 7th, I attended the 40th Infantry Division Annual Luncheon that was held at the Joint Forces Training Base. The following day, I went to a recognition barbecue here at the police department for our former police captain, Chris Carr, who had in excess of 20 years of service to the city and has accepted another position in his own hometown in Menopee. We're sorry to lose him, but he's been a real asset to the community. I also participated with my colleagues on the city manager candidate interviews. On Veterans Day, I joined the American Legion group in rededicating their facilities and celebrating the overall 100th anniversary of the American Legion. And I attended the city employee recognition lunch on November the 14th, where three of our employees were honored for five years of service to the city, and we had one that was honored for 35 years of service to the city. So we've got some very dedicated staff as well. And I've given a copy of this to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
I attended the CASA Youth Shelter Commander's Ball. That was the night of Trunk or Treat. This is the youth shelters' number-one fundraising event. It was done in Huntington Beach. It was well-attended, and hearing some stories of these kids, these at-risk kids, and what the youth shelter is able to do for them is quite spectacular. I attended the News Enterprise Best of Award at Wahoo's, where we recognized Councilman Chirco as the most favorite elected official.
I think that's what it was.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
No jealousy here. I won a recount of the ballots, but that's all right. Last week, I attended the Americana Awards kickoff, where our Citizen of the Year this year will be Dr. Bill Poe, dentist to the stars. Born and raised here, and long legacy of his family living in Los Alamos. This coming Saturday, there are two Orange County Fire Authority graduations. Academy 49, which is the laterals, which are firefighters coming from other agencies. They finish their training. They will be graduating at 10:00 a.m. at the Fire Authority in Irvine. And then at 4:00, Academy 48 for our new firefighters, the graduation will be there. We're gonna be getting about 70 new firefighters added, desperately needed, added to our stations. It's open to the public. If you've never seen a firefighter graduation, it's probably one of the most intense graduations you've ever seen. It starts with the pipes and bagpipes, and the pinning of their badges, and then they go into full demo mode where they're putting out fires, doing the jaws of life, scaling buildings. It's pretty neat. So our city can get you more information if anybody's interested in that. I want to make sure everybody's gonna be coming to Winter Wonderland on December 7th. There's snow, there's tamales, there's vendors, there's music. It's pretty cool for a member of all ages. And Santa Claus, yeah, Santa Claus is there. And considering next week is Thanksgiving, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. You know, there's, we're in an age of wanting more and more, and we have so, so much. And if you doubt that at all, go to another country for five minutes, and you will come back extremely grateful and thankful for everything that we have. So just make sure you continue to live in that daily mode of thankfulness. That's it.
Thank you. I had a quiet month this past, whatever, end of October. I did attend the CASA Youth Centers Commander's Ball as a guest there, and it was, again, as councilmember Hasselbrink, councilmember Gross has said, that's just one of those experiences that you have to just do, I mean, what this organization does. And when you look at how tiny our city is and the good that we do, it's just, you know, it really just makes, you know, it's just a good thing for us and this community. So again, we have Sunburst Youth Academy that's here. We've had CASA Youth Homes. We have Precious Life. We have all these charities that are just from the heart that all these local residents just give. The other thing that I did, which is not necessarily city-related, I did do the escape room. I won that at the family dance, and that was kind of tough. I don't want to, I don't want to know if I want to do that again, but especially with, especially with the council. I mean, I just can't imagine with all of us in there, it may be only one of us will emerge. So, but Emlyn, that was, it was really fun. I do appreciate that. But again, I had kind of a quiet month because I think I spent half the month, half the month on the road, and December's not looking much better. I'll probably be out nine days in December as well. But anyways, I want to thank my colleagues for picking up the slack that I kind of left, but then thank them for all their volunteer service as well. With that, closing council announcements, we'll turn over to city manager interim. City manager, if you want to.
Honorable mayor, council members, we just want to expand upon, I think, a few things you already mentioned. First of all, I wanted to mention the Employee Services Award Luncheon that was held last Thursday afternoon at Wahoo's. As councilmember Gross had mentioned, we actually honored or recognized four employees, Officer Delano Officer Delana Lopez, it was her five-year service, and she's one of our detectives. We also had Executive Assistant Chelsea Wilson recognized for her five years of service. Then, then the numbers go way up. Our senior maintenance worker, Victor De La Torre, was recognized for 20 years of service. And then Reserve Officer Harry, I'm going to say his name wrong, is it Whitehead?
Whitehead.
Harry Whitehead, 35 years of service, and as a reserve officer here for the city of Los Alamitos. So that was just a real honor, even though he wasn't able to attend. It was just an honor to be able to acknowledge that. We had about 35 employees that were able to attend, and just a great time to come together and acknowledge and recognize those four employees. And then I wanted to pass it over to Recreation Manager Emily Noda for announcements she'd like to make.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As you did mention, we have our annual, eighth annual Winter Wonderland event, sponsored by Title Sponsor Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital of Long Beach, and presented by Arrowhead Products. The free event will be held at St. Isidore Historical Plaza and Pine Street on Saturday, December 7th, from 4:00 to 7:30. The event features a snowplay area, sledding, Santa's Village, vendors, food trucks, entertainment, a tree lighting ceremony, and children's fun area. We also partnered with Southline Credit Union on our annual toy drive, and we invite the community to donate new and unwrapped toys, which will be accepted until December 6th at the community center, or at Winter Wonderland on December 7th at the city's information booth. Donations will be distributed to Los Alamitos nonprofit organizations who benefit local families in need. Thank you.
And Mayor, council, with that, though, it seems a bit premature to be saying, especially with 90-plus degrees out today, but on behalf of the staff, I want to wish you and yours a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay, before we go on to warrants, for the folks in the foyer, there's some seats up here. Please come forward and grab a seat. Don't be shy. Okay, item number nine are the warrants. Is there a motion to approve the warrants?
I'll move.
Second.
Chirco, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kusamoto.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy, absent. Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
I'm going to abstain. There are some issues that I had on some of the warrants that I provided to the city manager, and I've gotten partial answers, but I'm going to abstain at this time.
Councilmember Hasselbrand.
Aye.
Okay, passes 3, 1, 3, 0, 1, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Onto consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item. Does anybody want to pull anything from consent?
10 aye, please.
10 aye.
I'd like to pull F.
10 F, Gross. Anything else? Is there a motion for the balance?
Motion.
Move, second.
Chirco, Hasselbrand, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, okay. Do we need a report? Mark on aye?
Yes, please. That's, and I don't think I have any questions on this one. I just, I'm noticing we're spending a significant amount of money, and I want to make sure that we're talking about it and getting a report on it.
Absolutely. I'll provide a brief report, and also want to point out, we have our city engineer in the, in the audience as well, if there's any questions. The Finley Pump Station is located in the College Park North neighborhood. The pump station has really reached its lifespan. We're experiencing mechanical problems, have been for about three years with that, that station. It's actually a two-pump station. There's a primary pump, a natural gas, not pumps, because a primary engine, natural gas-fed, then a standard engine, and there's a very small sump pump. The primary engine went out of commission about two to three years ago. Because of its age, which is circa 1964, I believe, we weren't able to get parts to fix that. We experienced last year the second engine failing in the same situation, not being able to repair that. In looking over the project in further detail, it was also determined that since the engines are being pulled, it would be also appropriate to pull the pumps and repair all of that at the same time. It's quite an exhaustive process. It takes actually removing the roof off of the pump station in order to access that. So, though it was originally estimated at about $100,000 about a year ago, with the second pump issue, or excuse me, second engine issue, as well as the addition of the pumps to that schedule of work, it has increased the amount for the project significantly. We went through a competitive bidding process, and as a result of that, we have identified the bid to be awarded, I'm trying to find the name of the company, I forgot, to Coric Constructors Incorporated. The actual amount, the little bid amount is $220,000. There is some additional expense on the city side and for management oversight of that project, and we are identifying a total amount of awarding of $235,000 for this project. And that would conclude my staff report. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions, thank you.
So I'd like to just make a comment. So that's in my neighborhood, and I know that for the past couple of years, we have had some severe flooding, and it has not affected me. I'm, I'm outside that radius, 500 feet, so I can still vote on this item. But I know my neighbors over there have experienced water almost up to their doorsteps. And so that was with the rain. So I know this has been long overdue, and I really appreciate the city for getting onto this. I know we've gone, had some fits and starts of trying to get this under contract, but for my colleagues, this is really necessary and needed for the city.
Les, real quick, and ballpark, how much have we been spending for maintenance over the past few years, just to kind of Band-Aid this thing?
It's been quite costly with both of the larger pumps out. The sump pump will handle very minor storm events, but for example, this week, we're having to rent a pump for the anticipated rain. We spent in excess of $20,000 last winter alone, just to have the appropriate pumps to, to take care of the, that was an excessively wet winter, but just to give you an idea, that was just one year of cost for, for making sure that we could properly take care of the storm flow.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion, or you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. The concerns, and this was one of the issues that I went to the city manager on, the concerns are, we've got to start to look at these kinds of assets within the city and start to develop some type of retained maintenance, because much like we were faced with an $80,000 or $800,000, I don't recall what it was, on the police radios, when their lifespan ended, and we had to come up out of reserves to, to pay that, we implemented a process there where the department is paying money each month now for an anticipated 20-year lifespan, so that the council 20 years from now is not going to be faced with the same type of demand. It, it obviously may be a little different, but hopefully there's going to be some money there. We really need to be identifying where these critical assets are within the city and start to determine how we can set aside retained maintenance for them. We've, we've not done maintenance on buildings that the city owns for at least 10 years, and we're paying the penalty now for that. So we've got to start doing things better moving forward. So I'll leave it up to staff to figure out how we do that, but we really need to be setting money aside for these things.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Chirco, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4, 0. Thank you. Next, we have F, 10 F. Dean, did you want a staff report?
I, I don't think so, but I want to discuss it because this is a request to approve replacement of arterial street signs as part of a capital improvement project. The costs are not all that significant, but there's a change that's being recommended, and I want to ask my fellow colleagues on the council about that, because I don't think we've had an opportunity to weigh in. Currently, the signs, the overhead signs are illuminated, and they've had issues with power, which has been one of the reasons. There's a need to replace them. They're going to replace them, or they're proposing to replace them, with just a flat steel sign with reflective lettering on it, which they provided us with some copies, but they're not going to illuminate them. And I, I think with the advancement of technology and the use of LEDs, there's already power to those signs. And so to replace them with these mean we're going to be disconnecting the power and taking it out. And I think my preference would be that we remain with power lights and look at using the LEDs. Power's already there. We're going to remove the power to put these flat signs up, and, and the reflectiveness, most of the signs that are along the Boulevard, and this is just the first phase, on Los Alamitos Boulevard between Catella and Cerritos. I believe there's 17 signs that are affected by this, but I'd like to know what the cost might be just to convert those over to LED lights. They don't require the transformers, and replacement of bulbs and LEDs seem to last forever. What the cost would be to use them as illuminated signs rather than just non-illuminated. The lighting along the Boulevard has moved to the center divider, and some of the lighting along there really doesn't illuminate these signs as much as I believe should be. So I would like to ask staff, and I notified city manager that that was the case, ask staff what our cost would be to retain power in the signs and use that power for LEDs rather than just taking the power completely out and just hanging up a flat sign.
We don't have an exact cost for that, however, it, and we can assess and evaluate that further, but the difficulty is, it has to be assessed on a case-by-case basis. The hardware is, is old, it's been established for quite some time. So it's a matter of, in some instances, it may be a very simple change-out, and in others, it may require much more work, but it would be something we'd have to very carefully look at. We could certainly report back to you, you know, continue this until next month and come back with additional information if you'd like. What really brought about the idea of doing this not only was obviously a cost savings initially to do this, but secondarily, we do have a few signs, and one example is right out here at the intersection in front of City Hall, where that is an example of a sign that is no longer an illuminated sign, it is just a blade sign with a highly reflective coating on the outside. So we were looking at this from a cost-saving standpoint. We can, over three years, change out all of the, of these signs at the signalized intersections at an approximate cost of $25,000 a year. We knew it'll, we do know it'll be more to go the other direction, but at this point, we would have to report back to you if you wanted to have that information in detail.
I would, I would like that, and if the council agrees with me, then I'd make a motion to not accept this at this time and ask staff to come back with the additional costs. Seems like the 17 signs, if I read the, the report correctly, we're looking at about $20,000 to $25,000 cost-wise, and I don't think the LED will be that much more significant. I understand some of it may not be applicable, but I hate to see them pull power out to those signs if we can salvage, salvage that part of it and, and continue to have them illuminated. That'll be a little bit different cost because it's not flat steel with reflective on it. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, so a motion basically to return to staff and bring it back forward in the future.
Can I just, can I just ask a question before we vote on that? So the cost is $25,000 for 17 signs? Is that, is that right?
That is correct. That would be to remove the existing hardware, establish the new hardware and, and the signs to be installed. So that, for those 17 signs, yes.
Okay.
And then, I'm sorry, Les, that's 17, 17 signs, $25,000, including labor, or that's including labor, but the labor's all in-house? We're not using outside, or we're using?
We're outsourcing this.
Okay, and then if we were to, well, okay, so then I guess the, the trade would be, when we see what the illuminated signs, there'll be a cost above that for the same thing, electrician plus mechanical touch labor to install, correct?
Correct. We'd be, we'd have to have an electrician. In addition to that, we would have to replace the plexiglass of each of the signs. If, if you notice, several of them are to the point, like Florista in Los Alamos, where you really can't even read Florista any longer. So does that matter? So we'd be looking at having to do the modifications to the sign to go to an LED or replace the sign depending on the condition, and then the replacement of the actual plexiglass.
Is, is there going to be a cost to getting us an estimate for the LED light change-out, or is that, can, can we do that in-house?
I think we'll be able to do that in-house, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then I guess last question in terms of longevity. So the, the life, the, the flat metal signs will have a certain lifespan, right, given the reflective coatings, but then the lights have a different span, even though the LEDs will have a lifetime, a longer lifetime, the Florista sign is kind of like melting, right? So no matter LEDs or not, it's weathering, it's, and that's, so I guess that'll be factored into. So if you look at just not the instant cost, but over the 25 years, whatever the life would be, can we get the 25-year cost as well?
Sure. We'll do a life expectancy comparison.
Please, okay. But I'm, I'm kind of good with the motion. We have a motion, is there a second on that?
Second.
Chirco, Gross, Chirco, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we got 3, 1. Next, we're on 11, right? 11A, Building and Standards Code and Fire Code Adoption. And I'll give it to you, staff report, please.
Thank you, honorable council members. This was introduced to you at your last meeting in October. Back for second reading with a public hearing required tonight. Quick staff report. For greater than a decade, the state building standards commission has been adopting new construction regulations about every three years, which is known as the California Building Standards Code. In 2018, Building Standards Code will take effect and apply to all California cities January 1st of 2020. Local jurisdictions do have the authority to make any amendments to the standards code that are administrative, procedural, or make stringent, or more stringent due to local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. There are a limited number of amendments to reflect local conditions that apply to certain roofing materials, concrete, or masonry, foundation walls, swimming pool burrows, barriers, and small wire installations that are identified in what's before you. Overall, the new standards code is primarily an energy-efficient-focused update. We are introducing this to you for second reading in order to provide sufficient time for the requirements to go into effect by January 1st of 2020. The amendments also include certain changes to the fire code. The Orange County Fire Authority has been the lead in that portion of the effort, and a number of the amendments are proposed, with most being minor revisions. And a particular note, there are 11 amendments that address mobile fueling. And as I mentioned, this is a second reading of the two ordinances for your consideration this evening, and as required by state law, which is counter to our typical process, the public hearing is scheduled for this evening during the second reading. And if you have any questions, I'd like to point out, we have our building official, Mark Abbott, in attendance, as well as Assistant Fire Marshal Brian Healy. And that would conclude my staff report. Would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So back here to council, if you have questions?
No.
Questions? Dean? I think we're good. So with that, we'll, open the public hearing, then we'll take a motion. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Back to here to council. Is there a motion?
All move.
Gross?
Second.
Chirco. And then this, we do a voice vote, is that, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? Passes 4, 0. Thank you. That's quick. Okay, next.
Um, next one here. Camping.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I got to get to, I don't get the hyperlinks to work. So what's the number, 12?
12, it's the anti-camping.
12A, so 12A, the anti-camping ordinance. Maybe we have a staff report, please?
Honorable council members, staff is bringing forward this draft ordinance for your consideration this evening. This is coming forward as a result of the city's actions to be included in the settlement agreement with the Orange County Catholics Workers, and that memorandum of understanding, or excuse me, that agreement now being in effect. City staff, after that action was taken, began working with the North Spa Advisory Group, which is primarily city managers representing the 13 cities. The conversation focused in on creating a model, what's been termed anti-camping ordinance. As a result of that, our city attorney and myself took on the process of drafting As a result of that, our city attorney and myself took on the process of drafting an ordinance for consideration. We did reach out to work with a few of the other North Spa communities. However, they didn't, weren't responsive, I guess, to our engagement, so we went forward with drafting the ordinance. As I identified in a memorandum to you this afternoon, I do apologize for the late moment of that coming out, but as I mentioned in my memorandum to you this afternoon, there has been dialogue, recent dialogue with at least two of the North Spa city managers, and they have asked for consideration to be given to continuing this item until the January 21st meeting. We did provide a draft of the ordinance. It is being distributed out to the other North Spa cities for their review and consideration. Again, not for approval and adoption by their respective cities, but to ensure there's consensus among the 13 cities with regards to the language as a model ordinance for each city to take action on. I did want to also mention to you that the enforcement of the provisions aren't able to take effect until the provisions, or one of the provisions within the settlement agreement with regards to units, shelter units are established. I did want to mention that I have received correspondence from Placentia and I've also heard from Buena Park that there are projects in both those communities that are underway. In fact, I believe Placentia is taking a matter to their city council, I believe, this week for consideration for that project. So the proposed shelters and navigation centers are moving forward, and there's the possibility that beds will be available early to mid next year, but we don't know an exact date at this point. So with that, that would conclude my report. Be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Okay, back here to council. Any questions of this?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to continue the item until the January 21st meeting at the recommendation of staff.
I'd actually like to talk to the city attorney, and maybe in the meantime, so we can move on with our own ordinance. Maybe talk to the city of Long Beach about doing some sort of temporary, because right now, we can't do this ordinance, we're going to enforce this ordinance, so we're completely dependent on Placentia and Buena Park to get their shelters actually constructed and available for us. So I would hope that at least with Long Beach, maybe we could have some sort of agreement with them that if we need to use a shelter there in order for us to enforce any kind of camping or anti-camping ordinance, that we would be able to have that dialogue with them.
Yeah, I was just going to add, at your direction, I'd be happy to look into that and coordinate with the city of Long Beach.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion to continue. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? And at this time, you know what? I'm going to ask, any members of the public wish to speak on this item at all regarding this ordinance that we were entertaining, contemplating? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close.
Yeah, and I'll just make a comment. You know, this is, this is an item that I asked to be put on the agenda, and I think probably another colleague also asked. This, just for the community's knowledge, you know, the city voted a few months back to contribute to this local homeless solution. Buena Park and Placentia are, have agreed as part of this global settlement in North Orange County to construct homeless shelters. And as a result of that, and in connection with that, we took a look at our laws, and we did not have an anti-camping ordinance in our city. And so I recommend it, and I think others as well recommend it, that we get an anti-camping ordinance on our books to prevent folks from camping in our public spaces in the city. And so I think it's important that we do this timely. However, I understand the desire to try to improve upon the ordinance and perhaps work with the North Orange County Spa to do that. So I'm fine with continuing it if we'll end up with a better product, which it sounds like we probably will.
Okay. Then with that, we have a motion, second to continue. Any, well, let's see the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 4-0. Well, I think that kind of does it for us. So next item is just adjournment, so we adjourn to the next meeting on December, what day is it?
Mayor, if I may, I sent a note to the city manager today. The former mayor for the city of Cypress passed away today.
Oh.
Walt Bowman. And he's been very active with their chamber, with the city for a long number of years. And if it's permissible, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in his honor, if that's agreeable.
Yes, we'll go ahead and Walter Bowman. In honor, we'll adjourn this meeting in honor of Walter Bowman. Thank you for bringing that up. With that, the meeting's adjourned, so students, please seek out whoever you need to have sign your papers. Come forward. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.